Latari. Latari.
You're muted.
Ah, thank you. Jones?
Here.
Euler?
Here.
I don't. Move to the back agenda as presented. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, oh.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, mine.
So. Four point one.
Can I make a comment? Can I make a comment? Yes or no? Can I make a comment?
On the legislation?
No, on these? The, the ordinances?
Let's, let's do number four and we can talk about this. Uh, item four.
Go ahead and read the entire, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And it works, I'm sorry. Sorry, thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerks to execute an agreement with Schneider Electric Buildings Americas, comma, Inc., for investment-grade audit services presented by Mike Scraggs, City Manager. Thank you.
Okay, so we are discussing four point one, we are discussing only the investment grade audit services, is that correct? We are not discussing solar. That's the next one.
Well, yes, and I apologize, I created one council letter that covered both topics and kind of put them together, but they are two separate and distinct decisions. One is entering into an investment-grade audit agreement with Schneider. The other then, and you could do one and not, you could do the investment-grade audit and then not do solar, and then solar is the second item.
Okay, thank you, I just want to be clear.
Yeah, I apologize for the confusion. Okay, so, um, thank you for the willingness to meet in special meeting and we are, we have more than usual zooming in, so I want to acknowledge that. Peter Hinkle and Dan from Schneider, I suggested to them that it would be acceptable for them to zoom in, given the short notice and setting all this up and the number of times they've commuted to Warrensburg already. So they did confirm that they're on the line. Councilwoman Latari is also joining us by Zoom, and then I believe Kristin Dorman, Assistant City Manager, is on Zoom as well. So, um, gonna jump into it. We've had previous conversations about both of these topics, one being investment-grade audit services, how that works and the benefit of that, and standalone of solar. Uh, I think what I've communicated to you before is Schneider Electric as an investment-grade audit, uh, firm can inventory all of our facilities, and if nothing else, give us an assessment of our facilities, their anticipated life, needed repairs, which then gives us, gives me a good information to add that into the budget planning we've already done in terms of kind of that 25-year financial model. They also then can facilitate implementing and, and help analyze funding of those necessary improvements to uh, buildings, lights, rooftop units, those type of things. So that is, is one item, um, that stands alone in, in all, and, and honestly, the contract amount for that, the size of it is such that it's within the city manager's authority to contract that directly. But this is a little bit unique in that it synced up with the solar decision, and um, we're proposing that we go through Omni as a cooperative purchasing approach. So we just kind of, a little bit of Belt and Suspender said, we're already talking about it, let's put that on your agenda as, as an ordinance and an action item. Uh, that way you're on record as acknowledging, uh, whether you're okay with the cooperative purchasing approach and proceeding with the investment-grade audit, which is something that I, I recommend. And then kind of the meat of it is the, the solar question, and we took that up, um, in your Monday, meeting on Monday. Understandably, you had detailed questions and appreciate the opportunity to uh, gather that information and meet in special session to go over that. And then for anyone that's listening at home or, or watches this video later, the sense of urgency is coming from the solar tax credits that are available, uh, the changes in that program from the one big beautiful bill that's recently been passed that essentially requires us to have five percent, um, of the project underway or expended before the end of the year to ensure our, our eligibility for thirty percent tax credit. If we miss that end of the year deadline, the tax credits go away and the financial viability of solar changes drastically.
For the minutes, would you mind just giving us the amount, rough, the rough amount of what that difference for the loss might be?
Yeah, so we, so, uh, Schneider looked at three different projects.
Yeah.
And, um, they that spreadsheet that's on the screen and then table. Uh, over on the right-hand side is, well, actually, you know, I'll say I think the, the word that's quantified is in the council letter, actually. Um.
Are we talking solar now?
Yes, I'm sorry, transition over to the, the credit. And do you want to, if you want, you can take up the investment-grade audit question and vote on that and proceed to the next.
I think, I think we're to do that.
Yes.
I'd rather keep them separate.
Okay.
Yes, please.
So, uh, that's all I have to report on investment-grade audit unless you have questions.
Well, can you tell us, um, the cost of the investment-grade audit? Because you, um, is it that, um?
Yeah, Peter?
Um. It was the, um, that total amount?
Right.
Okay, and that is what they do, that's the cost of the actual audit?
Yep.
Not what it would cost to implement any of their recommendations?
Right, that, that is the conclusion of the audit, reporting out to us, uh, their findings, and then there'd be a whole nother decision, and it could be multiple decision points in terms of how we implement.
And some of the recommendations that they, I'm, I'm going to assume, and you know what happens when you assume, but I'm going to assume some of the recommendations that they're going to come up with would be, um, items that we've already put into our budget, like, uh, rooftops or, um, some other changes that are already budgeted. So those won't be actually additional expenses, they'll just be kind of helping us put it in the right order along with a lot of other things as far as wrapping the building, new windows or lighting and that kind of thing.
Correct, and as Peter, uh, reported to you previously, they, they recognize that we've done some work recently that it, it kind of addresses some of those things. So some rooftop units as example, some of those are relatively new, they're not going to recommend that we replace them or for no good reason, that it will be scheduled, um, anticipating useful life of that equipment.
And then another thing that I noticed in, um, reading the information, it also talked about, um, are they called blankets for the pools?
Yes.
And that's, I think that's an excellent, excellent idea that if you're going to heat a pool, um, to cover it?
Right.
To maintain the temperature, did, I didn't know whether or not that included the outdoor pools, but can't, aren't some of those solar blankets that you can use on an outdoor pool to help heat them?
Yeah, and I'll defer to Mr. Hinkle, um, we've had that conversation. Two, my two takeaways on the indoor are not only does it conserve energy, but it can also reduce the humidity in the space too, uh, which is helpful. But Peter, would, can you elaborate? I'm sorry. Oh, okay, sorry, apparently we had to allow you to talk, so now you can talk.
There we go. Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Ah, okay. This is Peter, not, you know, the strange voice in the room, so to speak, echoing through your chambers there. So I apologize for not being able to be in person, but, uh, yeah, to answer your question about the outdoor pools, we could easily add those, I mean, that's not much more of an audit when we already are going to be onsite looking at the indoor pool to go outside and to look at those pools. I think to Mike's point, because it's an indoor pool, you're combining heating and cooling of that space as well as the humidity mediation or remediation in that space as well. So that would be more of a, a bang for your buck or a value perspective as opposed to an outdoor pool that if you're not heating it, um, you're might, you might not have as much heat loss. Did everybody hear that? Sorry.
Yeah, yes, and Peter, for our benefit, if you could speak up a little bit more, we, we've got our system maxed out on this end.
Is, is that better, worse?
Uh, that's better.
Okay.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, that as part of the audit, that is certainly something that we could take a look at and then reach some, do some cost-benefit considerations, um, that's kind of the point of the investment-grade audit.
Absolutely, there's, there's going to be things up there, might even be a building or two that once we get going, you say, hey, we, I think we removed, for example, like the animal shelter, and I'll just use that as an easy example. You might say, hey, Peter, we were going to do something here drastically different now, we want to go a different direction, would you look at that? Uh, we would have no problem adding that to the audit, and I wouldn't sit there and, and try to, you know, come back to council or do anything along those lines, we just, while we're onsite, add that building. Um, if there's a couple of pools that you wanted to look at that aren't on that list, uh, same kind of an approach. With the outdoor pools as compared to the indoor pools, I was just saying that your, your focus there is on heating the water as well as the air. So really from a savings perspective and a benefit, if we're not heating the outdoor pools, there might not be as great of a savings, it might just be looking more at water loss at that point. But we can certainly take a look at what the value of covering an outdoor pool might be. Um, but, but counsel, I don't know who exactly made the question, but, uh, that would for sure be something we could add to the audit. Um, knowing it now and knowing going into it, that wouldn't be an issue.
The other question I have is, um, on the list of the different facilities, um, it was split like in two, so I can't remember if the first half of the list was red, like we were going to do those, and then the second half of the list were a different color, like those were maybe tentative? Are some of them for sure, and depending on the cost, then we determine whether or not we go further down the, the line?
Uh, Peter, are you, that question?
Are you? Yeah, are you referring to the presentation and how those had a couple of different colors?
Yes, yes, your presentation.
Awesome, uh, so I can easily, so all of those buildings listed are included in the investment-grade audit. The reason for the green versus the, uh, gray, we'll call it, uh, was the green ones were the ones that we have done kind of a, a conceptual review through the business case process. So those are the ones we've already looked at or have seen and know that there's a need. The other ones, we just have not had a chance to put our eyes on from an engineering perspective.
Thank you, that helps a lot, thank you.
And total, total cost? The audit?
The total cost that's in the contract was, uh, for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand square feet, give or take, it was twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars in total. And that included community center, city hall, PD, uh, street maintenance, public works, fire station two, municipal center, west plant, uh, facilities, park maintenance, east plant facilities, uh, cemetery office, uh, the main pool, Lions Lake Park, and the, um, Warrensver, Warrensburg Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Let me ask, is that information in one of the, I'm not seeing it, is it in one of these documents that's listed?
That was in the Monday's information.
Right, right, so we don't have it again here in today's meeting?
No.
Jody sent out that presentation the following day, it would have been in an email from Jody, I think we received on Tuesday.
I just assumed that since we were voting on whether or not we're going to enter this in agreement, that the agreement with the total amount would be here somewhere.
Yeah, that, that's on me, I apologize.
That's all right, I'm working under less than ideal conditions, so I don't have, I don't have all my pieces and parts here together, okay.
Any other questions from Mike on this? Any questions, Susie?
Nope.
Motion to move to motion to move to second reading by title only. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement with Schneider Electric Buildings Americas, Inc. for investment-grade audit services. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four point two. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement with Schneider Electric Buildings Americas, comma, Inc. for an energy and construction services contract presented by Mike Scraggs, City Manager.
Okay, so the list related to solar, in answer to the question about the value of the tax credits in the table and the fiscal impact portion of the council letter, definitely breaks it out, like the police department, East Sewer Plant and the Westwood. And so, uh, I'll give you the cost, the tax credit, and then the net cost. But so for the police department, total cost, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine oh two, value of the tax credit, one hundred and sixty thousand, one seventy, and the net cost of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven thirty-two. For the East Sewer Plant, a total cost of four eighty-one, one twenty-four, a tax credit value of one hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five, or a net cost of three hundred and sixty-three, two forty-nine. At the West Sewer Plant, a total cost of four eighty-nine, nine seventy-six, a tax credit value of a hundred and twenty thousand and nineteen, and a net cost of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight fifty-seven. And you, and you could choose individual projects, you don't have to do all three. Um, but if you did all three, then the value of the tax credits is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, sixty-four dollars. So part of the conversation on Monday, understandably, was kind of mixing and matching some assumptions and scenarios, I think. Uh, so walking you through that a bit, and one of the items that, that's an attachment is a fifteen-year ever G, you know, rate increase history. You can see each year what the ratings they got. There are some years that are noticeably large, and then there's other years of no change at all. Um, and so I provided a five-year, ten-year, and fifteen-year average rate increases. Five-year being four point nine percent, ten-year being two point one seven percent, fifteen-year being two point seventy percent. So just as kind of a frame of reference, um, there. So then, um, the next item that, that your seats and, as in the packet, is a ba, what I'm calling a baseline comparison of each of the three items that are proposed for consideration. Police shade canopies, the East Sewer Plant, and the West Sewer, Sewer Plant. Um, it identifies the current consumption at those locations, the solar production as a percentage of what the solar production represents then. It talks about, I originally had direct cost avoidance, um, and really it's the annual savings, the total annual return at that location, and the solar installation cost, the cost after the tax credit. So if you take that tax after the cost, tax credit, you take the cost after the tax credit, divided by the annual return, you get how many years it would take to recoup your cost. Um, and then, uh, the assumption in, in this, uh, analysis of a forty-year useful life of solar, and then after the useful life, or the break-even point, what, how many years are left between break-even and the useful life? This, every one of these assumes no increase in ever G rates. And so for the gleeshade structure, the system might actually have to last about forty-six years to break even. For the East Sewer Plant, uh, it would break even in about thirty-five point six years and leave four point three years if it had a forty-year life. And then for the West Sewer Plant, it would break even in thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight years, and have about two years after the useful life for break-even. But as you discussed on Monday, uh, one of the big variables is what do we think ever G rates are going to do? But I, I think there was consensus they're not going to stay the same, it's just a question of what they are going to be. So the next spreadsheets that, that are in the back at your seats, take, the, provide you down the left-hand side, scenarios of one to through ten percent, and then they provide the years across the tile. Um, and so it identifies the individual annual saving, and then it also has a running total. And, and then if you go up to the second page, you start to see the break-even points depending on the percentage. So using the police shade canopies as an example, and if you said you're going to assume annual rate increases of, of five percent, then next time I don't, oh, that's because of the, uh, the payoffs, and so if you Oh, I see, uh, yeah, we skipped your sixteen through thirty, I apologize. Um, so on the police side, uh, in a three percent scenario, it pays, it breaks even in twenty-eight years, a four percent scenario breaks even in twenty-five years, five percent in twenty-three years, and then just keep working way forward in terms of a break-even point, um, as, as the percentage goes.
Peter, could you mute yourself, please? Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So, three, I, for the sake of conversation and looking at the prior history, use three percent as the, um, uh, as an assumption for the uh, annual rate of increase in thirty years as the, um, uh, timeframe for the useful life of the system. So on the police shade canopies, at three years, it would break even between twenty-eight and twenty-nine years, and by, and maybe that would break even through the year thirty, would be thirty-five thousand, seven forty-seven. Um, I have the same analysis for each one of the East Sewer Plant and the West Sewer Plant. And so I think the two main variables that if you can reach consensus on, and I can then help you understand the financial profile, is what percent of annual average rate increase might be using, and what useful life for the system might be.
Yeah, and I think that's what we should have a discussion on, on, on what each of us think that the annual rate increase might be, um, going forward. And I'll personally, looking back, I'm looking back at three years, uh, myself, and around six point eight, seven percent. Um, you mentioned that I had City Council, uh, Councilperson Jones about the data centers. Um, I'm reading about fifty percent increase in electricity needs going forward to twenty twenty, uh, twenty fifty. So I'd just like, have your ideas or discussions of what you think the rate increase might be going forward on an average annual basis?
I, yeah, it we get our energy from Evergy, and part of the discussion on Monday was that Evergy is up for sale, and it's most likely going to be purchased by West?
West Star is what used to be.
West Star?
Kansas.
Yeah, in Kansas, and that's where they have more than one, uh, data center, plus that's also where they put the Panasonic, um, battery, the big Panasonic, well, it takes a lot of electricity to put into all those batteries to make a battery. So the, and what I had read is that it would take at least three, uh, power, new additional power plants to provide enough power for the data centers and for the Panasonic. Um, and, and they haven't, they haven't started to build it. I don't know who's responsible for building it, if it's the data centers, and the Panasonic, uh, should be building these power centers to provide them with the utilities that they need. Uh, but I doubt that's what's going to happen, it's going to be passed on to the consumer. And it's electricity, but it's also water for the data centers that they're using to cool those large, um, computers. So between electricity and water, they're sucking just about everything they possibly can out of the grid and the ground. Um, as far as the amount, uh, that rates could go up, I, I don't think we could even fathom what that amount might be. So I, I can't come up with a number, I think it'll be just unbelievable. Um, at some point in the near future, we'll see that.
You think it'll be more than three percent?
Oh, absolutely, I think we're going to see fifty percent increase, unless they build, somebody builds, and then somebody has to pay for new, um, facilities to generate power.
Right.
So who pays for that? The public.
Right. So we'd agree, it, it'll be more than three percent on an annual basis increase?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I concur with that.
Yeah, I do too, I'm, from what I'm reading, they, uh, Evergy's turned down three offers by this year so far, and each one is a half a billion dollars more each time. And so they're they're on the market, or else people wouldn't be wanting them. And I think over the next five years, we'll see three and a half to five percent. Because they're going to see, when I did research, plus I think either may have said, uh, BPU, Wyandotte County, they've maxed out. They've got so many data centers and so much stuff there because they're cheaper than Evergy, but they can't produce anymore. They have to buy it, and that's not cost-effective. And that's what's going to happen here, the, all the stuff that's going on now, the data centers, and Randy can atone to this, that this is just going to, this is just the tip of the iceberg of these. These data centers are going to continue to grow and grow and grow. And, yeah, Evergy, whatever power company is going to have it is going to cough up the funds first, but if you look at your present Evergy bill, recover from storms twenty seventeen, recover from here to there, the last, uh, the thirteen point four, two percent increase that was just done, Evergy, uh, said it was for, uh, updating infrastructure. And, and that is just in Western, sorry, in Kansas, they're doing nine percent this year for solar farm and another gas generation plant.
So one, and one thing that might help your conversation, and first I need to, to note that we are, we will need to lease finance or basically finance the, uh, systems at least for, uh, the sewer plant. Potentially, we could put the police department as well. So these numbers don't include, uh, the carrying cost of financing, but if you look at it the other way and say, we're going to assume, they have a thirty-year life, what percentage increase would be needed just to recoup our investment in thirty years? Uh, the police department, shade structures, we need to see an annual average of three percent. The East Sewer Plant, we need to see an average, an annual average of one percent. In the West, we need to see an average of two percent. So, uh, we kind of referred to it on Monday as the hedge against, uh, Evergy rate inflation. And it's a lot of effort and a lot of carrying and a lot of deferred gratification or delayed gratification maybe, but if, if Evergy's annual rate increase is three percent, then anything above three percent is where we start to realize savings, at three percent, we break even. Um, but anything above three percent, then we're making some more money.
What's, what is the total cost for all three locations combined? I can't do this in my head. It was like a million something.
Say. One point six?
A million one? I think that is, I think in the contract, I've, um, one million, six fifty-four, nine oh five, in the contract under article two.
Yeah, that's no tax credits, just the upfront investment. Yeah, one million, six oh nine, nine oh two.
Tax credit, take about about thirty percent off, right?
Yes, now, uh, if we finance it, there's, it's less than thirty percent.
Twenty-seven percent.
Probably four to six percent.
Yeah.
Of course, the Fed's talking about dropping rates again next week, so we'll see.
So, and I think Peter has some, some clarification, if we want to give him an opportunity to.
Well. Yeah, not too much, can everybody hear me? I'm going to get close to my computer, so if it's, my voice can speak a lot, okay? I will, I will scream as loud as I can without bothering, uh, the, my wallmates next to me. So the, the only thing that, that I kind of ran some numbers on and I sent it over to Mike, uh, specific to police, you know, a big conversation, I think, from, from Chief Andy was about the damage to those vehicles. When you start to run the numbers, uh, the six eighty When you start to run the numbers, the six eighty three, nine oh three, less the tax credits and your out of pocket is, let's just say, give or take about. Four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Just dividing that over twenty years, just for just simple, hey, let's just look at this over a lifespan of what maybe a canopy would last if if you're just putting up some shelter. You know, you're talking about additional energy savings coming off of that that cost. It's about twenty four thousand dollars a year annually. Minus the energy savings that these canopies would be able to produce, which is around ten thousand five hundred dollars. You're looking at about thirteen thousand four oh one out of pocket over just like a twenty year financing mechanism. So you divide that out by fifteen spots, and I think one of the conversations we had had with with chief was. You know, what would it cost to put up a canopy and so forth and so on to protect these vehicles and protect some of the UV damage that they've seen? It's about eight hundred and ninety dollars plus or minus annually per spot. Just to give you guys some added context in terms of at that one site. The added benefit and trying to trying to find a way to quantify that, which is probably not the easiest thing to do. But trying to find a way to kind of say, hey, there's. There's value here beyond just the solar, while the solar produces savings and it's got a payback, as Mike has mentioned. In that, you know, depending upon how you look at the escalation rates, you know, between. Twenty two to to thirty years, depending which one you use from three to five percent. There's also the added value of the covered parking at that location as well. So just to throw that out there and just provide some additional context.
Peter, could you speak to assumptions about the useful life of the system?
Yeah, so I I think you guys heard about the manufacturer's warranty. We were there. It's got that thirty percent or thirty year production value, but. Talking through things with Kurt, you know, he's like, look, that's just the warranty. A lot of these systems will last between that thirty to forty year time span. A lot of the other component parts. The smaller pieces, if you will, that we would worry about or we would think about would be just an inverter. Which I think we talked a little bit about going from DC to AC, which is just how the power is actually used. Within the building itself, it has to be converted so that it can actually go into the space and be used by the different pieces of equipment. But that that's about a fifteen to twenty year lifespan, and those are, you know, a few thousand dollars. It's not like we're having to redo the entire system. And it's a pretty simple fix in terms of if those were to fail or when they would fail. And they also have about a ten year warranty as well. So there's some some value there from a lifespan perspective. And it's, you know, the the panels themselves are going to have that thirty to forty year lifespan as far as. Leaving them up there and and having them run and function within within the space or wherever they're installed, whether that's police or or at the different plants.
And my question about that is. That's based on sort of estimates, right? Because these particular type of panels probably haven't been anywhere for thirty or forty years.
Correct.
In the field.
Correct. That that's on, that's on manufacturers' estimates and what they're seeing and just the technologies. I mean. Few years ago, it was twenty five years, you know, and they, like anything else, they've realized that these things get installed and people don't want to mess with them, and the longer the lifespan, the better off they're going to be, so. And and there is that degradation piece, I think, that we mentioned as well. You know, you're gonna lose, I think it was a quarter of a percent or a half percent, give or take. So over time, they're they're not going to be a hundred percent efficient, just like any piece of equipment, but it'll still produce energy. And then the last thing I'll say on that piece is, from an energy savings perspective, we actually discount what we anticipate. Simply because we we don't know if it's going to be a super cloudy, super rainy, or we're going to become Ireland one day here in the Midwest, and we have, you know, no sunshine. Not a knock on Ireland, just saying. But that that event kind of gives you a little bit of added protection. So we're about ninety to ninety five percent on the estimates for. The annual savings, just to give you a sense of where those numbers came from.
So if I recap. And one way to look at it is if Evergy's annual rate increase averages three percent or more. And the system lasts thirty years or more. You've at least broke broken even. Any rate increase above three percent represents savings. Any life beyond thirty years represents savings. So I mean, you could, it could be thirty years out and say. We just broke even, but three percent thirty years. Roughly represents a break even board.
I think what I would have liked to have seen. In our great, big, beautiful budget that we approved on Monday. I would have liked to have seen where the one point six million dollars plus financing. Cost was dropped into one of those pages and spread out over. The twenty five year period that the great big wonderful budget is set up for. So that we could see, are we still maintaining our twenty two percent minimum fund balance? Is this project going to consume all or a large part of our discretionary funds for years and years to come? And the other thing that I'm very concerned about is the direct pay could be pulled back. From us at the last minute, the federal government, as far as keeping their word through. And NIH. And other important of the PBS. They're just, it's just the funding is just disappearing. So we get to the point where we're supposed to get the. Thirty percent or the twenty seven percent if we finance it with tax free money, something like that. And we get to that point where we think we're going to get the money, and then the money doesn't come. Now, where are we?
I'm concerned. I don't have a lot of detail or answer for you on that.
And then the other, I think my response to the argument about UV damage to vehicles, if we go to enterprise vehicles. And start leasing our vehicles, we'll have them for approximately one year. Who cares if we have a little bit of UV damage?
Yeah. Yeah, to me, I think the values for the officers getting in and out of them and.
No, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, there is value to that.
Well, it protects the officers, protects the cars more from. Any damage.
But. To the point of. We could just authorize the building of a structure that isn't solar is kind of, I think, what you're saying, James, that. They're not going to be subject to the same kind of UV damage that they have been. And if that's a main concern, then we could simply build the structure and not have solar. That's what you're saying.
I think I said on Monday, this one is not A plus B equals C. It's much more discretionary on your part. And I'll try to help where I can.
I wish it was easier. I wish a couple of things I would, because of. The timeframe and the rush to get it done, it makes it difficult for. To digest. All the possibilities and know that this is a the right decision for Warrensburg at this particular time. Solar is the right decision to have, but at this particular time and with the promise of maybe thirty percent. Direct pay that we may or may not get. It's just there's too many unknowns. To make it, to make me feel comfortable committing to this kind of an expenditure.
With, if I can speak to the direct pay. Can you guys hear me?
Sure.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, with the direct pay, I I think, Councilwoman, I think you're correct. Like, it is a difficult situation that I think everyone is in who's going for these these projects. The the reason that they've put out all of the guidance and it's it's changed a few times this year since the big beautiful bill came out earlier in the year. What they've gone with is this new, hey, if you have the hold harmless and you're starting construction, you should get your funds. And I think I I mentioned, I think it was included in in the write up. That five percent on hold harmless will not include just panels. So we can, we're going to order the panels, obviously, very quickly, get those under contract, move that invoice over and get them delivered because they have to be delivered. But in addition to it, the schedule that we have, we should have this essentially installed. By the end of the year, if not January, February of next year, doing final commissioning with Evergy and having them actually turn it on. So. I'm not as worried about it going away because if if the federal government came in in November, December and said, hey, you're not getting any of these funds. It wouldn't just be the city of Warrensburg. There would be hundreds, if not thousands, of different communities, whether that's a school district. Several of our projects that were, you know, under construction right now on. That would would not only cry foul, but I I think there there'd be a lot of political push not to do or not to change that, especially with the guidance that they've put out. Back in August or back in July and then kind of reaffirm that in August. I don't see that the funding not being there or it going away. It's just the timeframe that they put everybody into of saying. At this date, December thirty first of twenty twenty five. You will no longer be able to be under these same rules and the rules will start to change. That's where the concern comes in is after that date. As long as we get everything moving and we can get things ordered, we can also start installing structures and essentially getting everything prepared electrically. There's a lot of things that we can do to get to the construction point to where it's nearly finished or almost finished by the end of this year. Which then again puts you guys in a really good place to be able to receive those funds. But I hear you on the concern with, you know, take out the the big beautiful bill. But the changes that have just taken place in other funding areas across the country, it's it's definitely a reason and a good topic to discuss.
Someone remind me, please, and I apologize for not tracking this better. When those tax credits would start to come back in and how long it would take us to get them?
It's it's based on when the system goes into production. So let's just assume, you know, if we did everything right, we could get it January, February, it'd be the next tax cycle. So it'd be the April of next year. April of not twenty six, of twenty seven is when you'd receive those funds. It it essentially goes on a tax basis because that's where the the tax credit comes from, and that's where the direct pay for government agencies comes from.
And it would would get all of that, whatever that that would get a lump, a lump amount, or it would be over time. Okay.
No, no, you get your thirty percent. So like, for example, Salina, we just finished our application, turned all that in. And then we would anticipate because it came under, or it started, I should say, its production earlier this year. So they'll be getting their funds next April of twenty twenty six.
So with respect to budget and cost and timing. And other than this impending deadline, I I wouldn't staff this through for you this way, but. Did feel the sense of urgency and the interest on the part of the council. So the sewer items net cost, assuming the tax credits there, is seven hundred and thirty three thousand one hundred and six. Financed over twenty years, we might actually be able to finance it more given the the life of the system financed over twenty years. Would represent fifty five thousand six hundred and fifty five dollars of expense per year. So I'm confident it won't jeopardize fund balances. We would have to fit it into the budget. But I'm confident it wouldn't jeopardize fund balances. On the police side. The reason in the council report I said it could be cash or could be least financed is. You you could choose to pay for it in cash out of the fund balance, or we could finance it. The net cost on the police side is four hundred and seventy eight thousand. And the annual, and again, financing it for twenty years, assuming four and a half percent rate, the annual cost is thirty six thousand three forty four. So again. I'm confident that wouldn't, you know, jeopardize our target fund balances, if you mean. We again have to fit it into the budget. And so I had. We were just, we weren't far enough along to build it into the model that 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 we brought to you with the budget, but I knew it was of interest and we were on the clock.
Good. Would we still have the ability to. Move forward with some of the identified but unfunded items that we had in our budget?
Some, yes. Some of those are so large, it really is going to take you a whole.
Right.
Isolated strategy.
Right, but some of some of those, we might be able to still be able to do those, so we wouldn't be killing.
Right.
That.
Not at all.
There's also. A requirement that the. I think it's that the panels or the. Materials purchased for the product have to be, I I don't remember the acronym that was used that they had.
Domestic or.
They had to be domestic or an approved country.
Yeah.
And have. Has Snyder purchased enough. Qualified panels to know that those are easily available?
That's actually, sorry to interrupt. That's actually the January one deadline we're trying to get ahead of. Peter, correct me if I'm wrong.
I, it's the foreign entity of concern rule, and that comes into play.
Or an entity of concern.
Okay.
Foreign, yeah, foreign entity of concern. The FIOC is just kind of a.
And so January one.
I apologize. I need to speak to someone here about my friends. I I have to step off for just a moment.
So. After January one, you can't purchase. If you purchase from, I assume, you could still purchase, you just lose your eligibility for the tax credit. So this whole January one deadline is based on getting products purchased in advance of that that prohibition kicking in.
So it's January one of twenty twenty six beyond.
Right.
That foreign entity.
Right.
A requirement comes into effect.
Right.
I thought, okay.
So this allows us to purchase from the current providers in the current format in a way that. It's plausible that we can get the equipment to get it installed. After the foreign entity of concern requirement kicks in, it kind of destabilizes suppliers of the equipment and. So we're trying to get this before January one to not have that be an issue.
I think. Can I keep asking questions?
That's why we're here. That's why we're.
You you love budgets. You're very good with budgets. So. What is your gut telling you? How? How well can you sleep at night? If we approve this to move forward. Are you going to have any sleepless nights wondering if we've done the right thing and that we will benefit from this sufficiently enough? That if we have some. Unforeseen thing pop up that's a million dollar or half a million dollar. Disaster of some sort, are we still going to be okay?
Yeah. Good question. I had hoped that the paid, the break even period was earlier in the timeline to make this more of a straightforward, no brainer of a decision. And I guess the way that I would look at it is. That three percent. If you assume the system has a useful life of thirty years. And as long as we experience three percent annual average growth in Evergy. We haven't lost money. We haven't made it a unfavorable financial decision. Now, we will have gone thirty years. And literally broken even. So then the question in my mind becomes, what's the likelihood of rates going up more than three percent a year on average? And what's the likelihood of the system having a useful life beyond thirty years? And that's where someone out in the future will probably be, it would be looking at us, thankfully, that we had the foresight to do it. That's, that's more delayed gratification than I was hoping for when we started into this process, but I I I don't think it's imprudent.
But I think to some point, we all think it's more than three percent.
Right. And and as I, as I mentioned on Monday, if if you view this as a hedge against Evergy rate increases. You know, it's not a fixed rate of return, but it's a hedge against Evergy rate increases. That makes some sense. Now. I I don't, in in general, I would try to avoid. At least financing a a lot of things and try to fund it. Something that has a payback like this, I I sleep better. At least financing that than just an expenditure that we don't know how we're going to pay for the next time around. Trying to be strategic in this, um, debt financing, but this. With a payback seems to make some sense.
Will this be something that if we do approve it and we move forward with it, that we would, it would be its own budget little pocket to kind of keep track of?
Well, we certainly, Schneider will certainly help provide kind of annual performance reporting, but we would run it through. Well, we certainly, uh, Schneider will certainly help provide kind of annual performance reporting, but we would run it through the general fund budget on the police side and the water pollution control's budget on that side. And I I hate to do this in the police department, but, you know, if if you ask me to prioritize them, um, the sewer plants probably are are more straightforward financially than the police shade structures.
I would agree with that because of the um, the volume of what the sewer plants need.
Yeah.
Their needs are so much greater than uh PD.
Yeah, I, PD was really trying to take advantage of solar to be a way to fund the shade structure more so than offset the electric bill. And and it it does, it it uh, Chief Munsterman ran some rough numbers and shared them with me if we just tried to uh, just using what we knew about pole barns and those aren't cheap. Uh, th- those numbers were um, bigger than I might have thought. But if anything, uh, the sewer plants are probably the ones that kind of sell themselves a little bit more.
The um, the one point six million, does that include, what's for the PD? Does that include their the, what their, which, the pole barn? That they would be sitting on, the cost of that?
Uh, it includes the support structures. I don't know that it'll be, it certainly won't be foresighted and and it's more just the canopy.
The canopy. So that includes the cost of the canopy and the installation and.
Yep, and drainage.
No surprises.
Drain system. Uh, can't guarantee that, but no, and and no, that's the intention.
The intention, no.
And surprises might be soil conditions or something like that.
Yeah, the contract does represent a comprehensive all the way through. The the company is doing everything. Uh, there's not, there's not another part of this that's going to have to get done. This is a complete project.
Let me ask a question then for Peter and Mike. If if we have a lot of questions here, I mean, we've got a lot of data today. All of us are kind of sorting through this and trying to formulate, is this the date we have to decide? Or if we had ten days until the next city council?
I need to defer to Peter on that. I know we're getting close.
Yeah, I know we're close, um.
Yeah, our our drop, I'll call it a drop dead date, kind of what we've been given by uh equipment folks, has been October first for ordering equipment. So give us like a week or two uh before that, because otherwise it's like a, you know, a fire drill, so to speak, to try to get documentation to them, finalize everything on our end. I mean, paperwork just takes time. That's our concern. The more time you give us, obviously, the the better off we're going to be. But I understand if there's more questions than answers or if there's more thought that needs to go into it, I don't want to, kind of like we said the other night, we don't want to pressure you into this. It's the pressure is coming from the deadlines of when we can order equipment and make sure it's on site and make sure we hit that five percent. Um, as well as trying to get this installed between whether that's today or a week from now, in the end of the year, first part of next. That would be my only concern.
So I'd like to ask council, if I could, if if they feel better, if we did it, came up for this ordinance at the next city council meeting, Adam, is that something?
Mr., you can, somebody could move to table.
Table.
To to the next meeting, that's.
If you'd rather do that.
Um, and Peter, that would be the twenty second.
Right.
So a week and a half before October one.
Does that make a deal?
Yes. Is that workable, Peter?
Yeah, that's fine. It that's, I I think Dan's on the call as well. I don't know if, from an engineering perspective, Dan, if you have an opinion one way or the other, how that helps or hurts. He might be on mute or unable to speak.
So let me just hear from council. Suzie, what do you think? Do you do you feel good today about this?
I feel like I'm ready to make a decision with maybe just another quick question.
Okay.
Which is, I, Jan, I'm really, really glad you brought up the point that our federal government has fought back money that has already been promised in the current fiscal year. So worst case scenario, that happens. What, what then? Is there any provision for uh delaying our payments or lowering our costs somehow? Is that like, what are the worst case scenario, we don't get the that tax credit? What, how would that play out?
The contract language, the 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 tax credit itself is more of a, I would consider it an incentive than anything. The the project would move forward at its cost. Um, and then your, you know, the idea would be your cost savings is your energy savings, but the language of the contract is not going to change the price of the project based on the credits themselves. The credits are hey, if you do this, then you recoup it on the back end through the credits. It's not a, not a dollar for dollar change in the contract.
Right, yeah, thank you.
So I I think the worst case scenario is we do all, we do everything, we install it and and don't get the tax credits. Now we incurred the expense and we don't have the tax credit to show for it. Um, and so, give me one second. That would increase our debt service across this wastewater pollution fund and the the general fund for the police department shade structures by another thirty thousand dollars a year. Um, so financially, we could absorb it, but it may not pay for itself anymore. We may have, we may have gone with solar and, you know, impacted carbon footprint, but we may not have bettered our bottom line.
Thank you.
We're trying to forecast to a point where everybody's here, not going to be here anymore. And things could be a whole lot different in ten years. We've seen that already in the last ten years.
One thing I would expect from, uh, just from the legal side of it in terms of the tax credits, uh, I don't anticipate that type of program increasing or continuing in a way that is going to be available in the foreseeable future.
Oh, I can agree with you.
Yeah, so, I mean, we've we've, it's been a pretty, you know, in terms of what the federal administration has done, their signal has been pretty clear. Um, they've they've been shutting down certain projects regarding alternative energy. So um, you know, I think I think that part of it is somewhat obvious.
I think if we move forward with this, I think one of the things that we need to do from the very beginning, if we move forward with this, is we need to become good friends with our congressmen and our senators and let them know that we are moving forward with this, that we are depending on this credit to come in and we need their protection should um the conversation start, that it might be pulled back. We need them to protect us and make sure we get ours because sometimes they can pull some strings and make things happen um to rescue. I mean, we're going to have, I think we need to start doing that. If we go through with this, we need, that's one of the things we have, we're going to have to do. All of us, everybody.
That's very strategic and we certainly could do that.
How do you feel about moving forward?
I'm feeling better, much better about it than I did earlier.
Okay.
If Mike is asleep during the night, I think I'll be.
Jen, go ahead.
Either one. I'm.
Suzie, you said you had one question?
That one question was it. I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay, any other questions then at this point?
Any, anything else, Mike?
Well, one observation, Peter uh shared a a point today that I hadn't picked up on, and that is it sounds like the tax credits are a lump sum payment. So as I do budget, I might try to figure out how to use that to our advantage. If we we get the lump sum tax credit on the front end, we might be able to structure the amortization schedule of the debt favorably.
Oh, yeah. If you pay off principal before.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council now?
No other questions for me.
Appreciate you coming in today too, by the way, so.
Are we ready? Motion to move to second reading by title only.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement with Schneider Electric Buildings Americas, Inc. for an energy and construction services contract. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now with the business, we seem are adjourned.
Thank you.
Please, console or?
I can move on.
Pardon?
Uh, I think it's all room.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Peter.